Good morning, please take your seats, so that we can start. Please sit down. Good morning ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. This is the fourth day of this public hearings, which started in Cape Town, and proceeded to Port Elizabeth. We now endeavor to try and get views of various stakeholders, including consumers directly from various communities who can share with us their views, and also proposants with regards to the two applications that are currently before us. Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearings are for two applications submitted by Eskom to the energy regulator, NERSA. The first application is a backward-looking application. It's a regulatory clearing account for the fifth year of the MYPD3. That means the costs incurred by Eskom during 2017-18 were related to produce and provide electricity. So the second one is the MYPD4 application for the next four years. So we expect that Eskom will present on board applications, and we also expect inputs from various stakeholders in respect of the two applications. Let me introduce the panel today that will be handling this proceedings. I'll be chairing the proceedings, and my name is John Fundomansky. I am the full-time regulator member responsible for electricity and gas at NERSA, and today I'm assisted by my colleagues who are members of the energy regulator. And I'll start introducing my colleague on my right hand side. I have Mr. Christopher Folley, who is the CEO of NERSA, and he is a member of the electricity subcommittee. On my immediate left, I am joined by Mr. Musumwetele Mkeze, who is the full-time regulator member, primary responsible for the regulation of petroleum pipelines at NERSA, and he is also a member of the electricity subcommittee. On my side left, I have Minister Kumbulani Sibana, who is a part-time member and a member of the energy regulator. He is also a member of the electricity subcommittee. Ladies and gentlemen, these public hearings have been advertised and advertised in various newspapers, as well as other media forms and the radio stations at different times. And I would like to also inform you that the proceedings today are governed by the NERSA public hearing rules, and I am going to summarize those rules to you just now. It is important that all presenters that are going to give us presentations today, that they are going to give those presentations under oath, and that the presenters will be allocated twenty minutes to do their presentations. Only the members of this panel here that are allowed to ask the questions from the presenters to get clarification. However, if there is a member of the public or any stakeholder in the audience who would like to get clarification from the presenters on a specific issue, that member of the audience can write the question in a piece of paper and hand it over to one of the members of the NERSA team. I've got on the third row, Mr. Sandy Lendanzi, who will then take that question and bring it to the panel here, and the panel will look into the question and decide how to ask that question so that we can get a response and clarity from the presenter. If presenters of the view that some of the information they would like to share with this panel today contains or it is commission-sensitive or confidential, please indicate that at the stage where you are about to present that information so that we can decide whether or not we'd like to clear the room in order for us to hear the confidential information. Please also note that the recording of this hearing today will be done through the audio system and also on live streaming, and that will be the official record as we proceed. I would like to request that you switch off your cell phones, please, so that they do not interrupt us and disturb those that will be presenting, or you can keep your cell phones on silent mode, please. In terms of tea and lunch, the officials from NERSA will inform you where we are going to have lunch, and I will also indicate at what time we have lunch as well as tea. Today, we received about eight requests to make presentations, and obviously we'll start with the applicant, which is Eskom. And at this stage, I would like to invite the person who's going to inform us about the evacuation procedures if we need to evacuate it at all.
Welcome to the Durban ICC, where the world meets Africa. As a leading world care advanced facility, we make your safety our number one priority. Please give us your attention for a few minutes to take you through some important health and safety information. As the Durban ICC is a public space, please remember to keep your personal belongings safe and with you at all times. We have many bathrooms for you to use around the venue. They are clearly marked in the foyer and concourse areas. The Durban ICC is a smoke-free building, but we do have clearly marked smoking zones outside the main entrance and in the courtyard opposite the concourse. Please make use of these areas and the ashtrays provided when you smoke. In the event of a medical emergency, please dial the emergency number 031 360 1007 for assistance. The Durban ICC has developed a very simple emergency evacuation plan that everyone must be familiar with. Our staff are specially trained and will be there to assist you in following this plan. In the event of an evacuation, an announcement will be made to leave the venue. Please remain calm and walk swiftly to the nearest emergency exit in the concourse area. These exit doors are clearly marked. Security guards and the marshals will also help direct you out of the building. Please do not use any lifts or elevators in the event of an emergency. Once outside, you will be directed to the nearest assembly point by the marshals for your safety. Please wait at the assembly point until the venue has been cleared, and the marshal deems it safe for you to return to your seats. Thank you for your time, and enjoy this event.
Thank you for the video. At this stage, I would like to invite us all to come forward and give us their presentation. Mr. Kasim? Mr. Kasim, any objections in taking the oath today?
No, not yet.
Thank you very much. Will you please raise your right hand? You solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to provide before this panel today is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Please state your full name and your position and address.
Karl Kasim, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Will you please raise your right hand? You solemnly declare that the facts you're going to present before this panel today is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your full name and your designation at Eskom.
My name is Majejo, I'm the acting head of the fire relief team.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Can you please raise your right hand? You solemnly declare that the information that you're going to provide before this panel today is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and your designation at Eskom for the record.
My name is Michael Rager, and I'm the finding person responsible for planning.
Thank you very much. And the next one, please. Monique Z. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly declare that the facts you're going to share with this panel today is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your full name and your designation at Eskom for the record.
Call for research, general management, electricity planning, and market development.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kasim, may you start with your presentation?
Thank you, Chief President. One to the rest of the panel, ladies and gentlemen. I'll start with the regulatory clearing account. As a Chief President, it's the request for the financial year 2017-18, which is the fifth year of MYPD3. I think just to highlight from a timeline perspective, Eskom made this application on the 12th of September, and during the course of last year, based on the claims and the requests for year two, three, and four, of which thirty-two billion was awarded, NERSA had to make three decisions. One, the amount, which is thirty-two billion rand. Secondly, was when all that money flowed, uh, be included in future terms. That determination was also ready in October last year, and finally, the details, the reasons for decisions was provided by the regulator on the 7th of December. I think the point I'm highlighting here, when it gets to the request of twenty-one point six billion rand, there will similarly be three decisions that the regulator will make with regard to the RCA for the fifth year of MYPD3. If I move on, in terms of the regulatory clearing account mechanism, it, as the Chief President said, it looks back at what the actual results was and compares it to the regulatory decision for that year, and the methodology and the rules allow for certain adjustments. And those are the adjustments that are requested in this application of Eskom, which will then be analyzed by the regulator taking into account the comments that you receive throughout these public hearings. I think the big difference when we look at the numbers and the variances in this RCA for seventeen eighteen financial year, the big driver to the twenty-one billion rand is the top line, which refers to the difference in the sales volumes. And in this application, that equated to twenty-six point nine billion rand. From an overall primary energy cost, the unmade expenditures in primary energy compared to what was assumed in the determination is therefore included in this application as a reduction. And to highlight some of the key cost items, for example, the coal cost in total is a reduction of two point nine billion. Your open cycle gas turbines, one point four billion rand. The independent power producers, one point seven billion. An environmental levy of one point seven billion as well. In addition to that, there are other two big reduction items in terms of being refunded through this RCA application. It's the energy efficiency demand side management of one point one billion rand. And then with the RCA process of last year, the energy conservation scheme, reduction of a billion rand. That effectively results in Eskom then requesting twenty-one point six billion for this RCA application. And I think the main reasons, as I said, it really comes down to the big one being the revenue variance, and that's driven by the lower sales than what was assumed, leading to a combination of assumptions around the application was made, what would be the growth in the economy that was much lower than what was forecasted. And we also see that on certain commodity prices, the actual commodity prices were much lower than what was assumed. And in terms of the sectors that were impacted in the reductions, substantially was linked to the mining industry, the industrial industry, and then obviously the municipalities and what's behind them. So Chief President, that is the summary of the RCA application for seventeen eighteen that Eskom has submitted. And now I will move on to the MYPD4 application. This is a three-year application, which will commence in April twenty nineteen. And for the next three years, in terms of the methodology Eskom applies, in terms of what will be, the cost that will be incurred in supplying electricity over the next three years, and the assumptions around our asset base and the returns and our cash flows. Ultimately, this, uh, those are basically what makes up the application in terms of your operating costs and your asset base. And effectively, that culminated into this request. And when you convert that into what does it mean in terms of a price adjustment, it requires a fifteen percent increase for the next three years over the multi-year price determination for commencing next year. And if we look at, again, what are the cost drivers? One of the bigger items that we'll focus on today is the primary energy. Basically, what does it cost to produce this electricity? And the big focus we'll spend time today this year is on the coal costs as well as the independent power producers. And my colleagues will go into that detail. If I may now call on them to come and present a coal sample.
Okay, good morning, Monsieur. May I proceed, Chair? Thank you. Hey, morning, everyone. The first part I will touch on is the environment in which Eskom coal procurement in the right operating. It's quite a, it's a very dynamic environment. Eskom is a regulated entity. However, the coal market is not regulated. So we compete with other domestic consumers. We compete with people that export coal, you know, like for the same commodity. We have, you know, short-term shortfall in some of our power stations that has been reported in the media. We'll touch on where we are currently and what we're doing to recover there. We also need to have flexibility in how we procure coal to match the rate at which, you know, like on the ramp down for the power stations that are old, that is going into decommissioning phase. The cost of coal mining, this is not on the pricing side, it's consistently, I think, over the past ten years, about, you know, like inflation. Mining, mining inflation is different. It's got a huge component of imported, you know, like, uh, equipment, you know, like that is utilized. So that's basically one of the things that drives the mining costs and the high diesel, you know, like a component. So when you pitch a coal, this is one of the things that you deal with, that, you know, like you can't find yourself below inflation. We do experience, you know, like a pressure from the communities around where we operate, requiring, requesting, you know, for Eskom goods and services, including coal procurement, coal transportation to be localized to, you know, like to those communities and so on. We have competition from the exporters for the type of coal that historically, I think prior twenty twelve or so, was mainly for Eskom consumption. You know, the country used to export mainly grade one, grade two coal, which was testing for Europe. With the Asian market that started consuming, you know, like our coal and are now the biggest consumer of the export coal, they consume about eighty percent of what, sorry, of what the country exports, you know, via Richard Bay, which is China, sorry, India, Pakistani, and South Korea. So they are now also, you know, like utilizing the same spec of coal, you know, that Eskom uses. And I'll show you later when I show, you know, like the amount of coal that is produced in the country, why this is a challenge for Eskom. We do have new ones that are basically changing the landscape, and I think it's a disruptive technology to Eskom business model. We have a huge problem since as far back as twenty eleven. There hasn't been a lot of investment in the country. This is now South Africa Incorporated. Investment in large, you know, like a coal mine. Large coal mines, if you scale in terms of, you know, like, uh, cost and if you scale in terms of the rate at which you pay into coal. We are seeing migration by investors, funders, including the shops, away from, you know, like a coal-based technology. So it's basically on the coal mining side and also on the power station side. And part of the signal we're getting with the number of multinationals that have diverted out of South Africa. Okay, what, what we are, you know, like a, have Eskom, or what we have as Eskom's primary objectives in the coal space is that we have an objective to supply, you know, like electricity on an optimal cost of coal base. And this basically drives, you know, like the, the electricity megawatt, you know, like for the country. We know ninety, more than ninety percent of our energy is produced in coal. Security of supply that is coal should be available on time when it's required at the various, you know, like a power station. Eskom still supports transformation in coal procurement, that is what we spend. And it will, it will be done in line with what the mining charter, you know, like prescribes. And the Triple PFA Operator Rate of Procurement Framework Act and the Triple B E Act are the guiding principles on how Eskom will implement that. This is the official Eskom position on transformation with regards to coal procurement. There are certain critical success factors that, you know, like have to prevail for Eskom to be successful in containing cost of coal and security supply of coal. The starting determination, you know, like for coal should be linked to the market cost of mining coal and also what is happening, you know, like in the, in the market with regards to coal prices. We have cost plus lines, and their viability depends on capital expansion and capital funding, that is also a, a serious, you know, like a core requirement, you know, like to get success. And the ability for Eskom to send a signal to the, you know, like a broader market of our core requirement, and I will show you, you know, like what our core requirement is that we've already started with this. And certainly with policy and legislation, we've seen the Ministry of Mineral Resources have now finalized a mining charter. What is remaining is the Minerals and Petroleum Development Act that needs to be sorted out. This has led to a lot of investors basically not investing in the mining space including coal mining. In the, in our MYPD submission, which is basically F twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, you can see the total cost of coal that, you know, like we, we, we're going to spend. And below here is, is the volume of coal burn. And underneath is the volume of coal that we need to procure. I just need to highlight that they may give a section of a mismatch, that we are buying more coal than we require to burn. And that is a factor of, you know, like two of our power stations, which are tight coal aris. And those tight coal aris will be supplying above that for those particular years based on the products that you're using, it's the taro. And, and we do be, that's basically what drives, you know, like that number to look like. We are buying more coal than we require to burn. This is a slide I referred to earlier, and I'll just explain it soon. The, the blue part at the bottom is the amount of coal that we have already contracted. Up until twenty fifty, this is in line with the ramp down of the various, you know, like, uh, power stations. And the last year is basically the two P, this is when the two P decomission happens. So the bar for this is coal supply to the U P, Matimba, and Duba Power Station on fixed price basis. And the portion here is coal that is currently contracted from what we call short, medium-term suppliers. These are poor contracts starting from the range of one month to, you know, like ten years and so on. The green portion is coal that we have contracted, you know, like from the five cost plus mines, which are tight coal aris similar to this one. The coal is transported to the power station by conveyor, and this is basically the volume. The yellow part is part of the shortfall. Now, the one point three billion tons shortfall, or one thousand three hundred billion tons of coal that we require still to contract until end of the power station life is across the entire fleet. But part of it can be sourced, you know, like from the cost plus lines if we, if we invest or when we invest. And it's about two hundred and twenty-three, it's almost a quarter of a billion tons that we can get from this tight coal aris. And the coal we get conveyed by conveyor, you don't intend it's not caused. We believe it's an old rain now. But this is basically what Eskom still needs to procure and secure to ensure the coal supply to all, you know, like the fifteen power stations up until the end of station life. Different power stations that I'm down at here, different periods and so on. And the legend here, I think, basically explains, you know, like what I just said. So we have about three power stations that have sufficient coal contracted until end of their life. And these are the power stations that are for contracts, that are conveyor, they are part of this, conveyor, it's on fixed price basis. And there's one cost plus, you know, like a mine, which also a power station, which is the taro, that also has, you know, like a firm supply for the life of the power station. The rest of the eleven power stations still require, you know, like a coal to be purchased. The majority, seventy-six percent of this one point three billion tons that we need to procure is for crucial power stations. The station that we are currently constructing and doesn't have a firm supply process at site, it makes up seventy-six percent of the coal shortfall. And for the next five years, which includes the, the MYPD, you know, like a series, that is twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, you can see we have in the next financial year, ninety percent, ninety percent of our coal is contracted. We know where the coal is coming from, the contracts are in place, and the coal is already flowing. And in twenty twenty-one, you know, like eighty-eight percent. So that is eighty percent of coal that is in the pipeline, that is not coal that we're currently procuring. It's tender that has gone out, negotiations are currently underway at far advanced stages, but in a very, you know, in a month or two, we should be able to firm up, you know, like a supply. So for the next two financial years, we're fairly okay and covered with regards to coal contracting. We should not see ourselves in a situation whereby we sit stations with insufficient coal stock. And then from twenty twenty-two, you know, like up to twenty twenty-four, you can see the amount of coal that is contracted, slightly over seventy-six percent in the pipeline, which is coal contract that we are currently negotiating or sorting out through the tender process, four percent, which gives you about eighty percent of the coal, coal requirement is, is firm. Then there's eighteen percent, twenty-six, and twenty-nine percent for the next three years that we still need to source through a transparent, open, open tender process. We believe, you know, like the two years gives us a buffer to do all the procurement and be able to secure coal at favorable prices and so on, and not, you know, buying coal in the year that is required. So we've got a two-year heads-up, basically, to resolve, you know, like these particular years and the rest of the power station for the life of the power stations. The short-term situation, the question was asked at one of the hearings, you know, like where are we and when do we expect, you know, like to come out of the current, you know, like, ah? The red line basically just shows, you saw it, the what has happened up until December. The black line here, this bar top, you know, like a tail light, is, is our base plan or the recovery baseline, which says by the end of the financial year, we should have recovered to twenty-eight point two. The dotted line is our projection. We are projecting that we'll do better, you know, like as the baseline. And in actual mode, which is this red line, we are actually above, you know, like both the baseline and, you know, like the, the projected line. We currently, you know, like seeing, or we ended the, you know, December at twenty-seven point five, whereas, you know, like our base plan said we'll end up at three hundred point eight. Because of the shutdown in the industry, we expected that we managed to, you know, like to deliver more coal than planned, you know, like in December. So we believe come end of March, you know, like the recovery will be significant here. We are seeing good sign, but there are two big, big power stations that have now recovered above minimum, you know, like one of them is Kendal and so on. And chair, this, this is, uh, and, and this is basically where we currently sit. This is all our, you know, like a coal, fifteen coal-fired power stations. You can see Kendal is one of the stations that has recovered, you know, like a favorably to above its minimum level. We have also Cusile, then the cargo, Matimba, uh, yeah, Matimba and B two P. Those are the only stations that basically have adequate coal stock as per the prescribed minimum level. So we have a minimum level, this is the Eskom prescribed minimum level, the N S R prescribed or the grid coal, uh, prescribed minimum level is twenty. So our requirement is higher basically than the grid coal requirement. And we also have control levels, you know, where we look at alarm and expect that this is basically where we'd like to keep, you know, like a coal stock at different stations. Then you can see when the recovery is going to happen, you know, like the lab stations that will recover will be about around, you know, like a twenty, twenty. But based on this particular graph, we believe, you know, like we'll be able to recover, uh, you know, quicker than some of these particular days. But we are here, when we're going to recover, it's not going to take, you know, like more than two years to get to that recovery level, and are already showing that for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we've got adequate, you know, like a coal contract which gives us time basically to resolve the long-term coal procurement. Okay, this is a historic view of coal production in, in South Africa. Eskom is the largest coal producer, we consume about sixty percent of all total domestic coal, but if you look at the total coal production in the country, including the export, it's about fifty percent, you know, like of what we consume. You can see from, uh, twenty-two thousand up until twenty sixteen, this is the information source from the Department of Mineral Resources, they haven't updated, you know, like the twenty seventeen numbers. But you can see basically that there was a ramp up in the amount, total amount of coal that was produced in the country, and it remained more or less flat, you know, like a, uh, over the last five, six years and so on. However, going forward, you know, like this graph is tapering down, and this is the export line, uh, sorry, this, this gray line is basically, uh, the, uh, the Eskom band, this is basically, you know, like a, what the, the band requirement is, sorry. Total production in the country, that's the top red line. The export sales is a blue line, you can see, uh, I think seventy-two, last year they had a key record, I think seventy-six billion tons that was exported via Richard Bay alone. And you can see the, uh, the Eskom practices is, is the line that's got this blue dot, you know, like you can see basically we're hovering around one hundred and sixteen, you know, like a million tons, you know, like a coal. And then the local sales, which is basically Eskom, is other domestic users and also, you know, like a sin fuels, you know, like a basically the line that goes up to one hundred and eighty million tons. Sasso consumes about, say, forty million tons of the domestic coal, and the other twenty-two billion tons goes to other, you know, like a consumer, that is other utilities, hospitals and other, you know, like a domestic users. And it's, it is all, you know, like which was called, it includes, you know, like anthracite, you know, like a coal. And if you go to the graph, uh, below, uh, it's basically showing a comparison, you know, like of how resourcing coal in Eskom through the different contracts. This is a short medium term contract, that is now the one month to ten years I've mentioned. These are ultra-long term contracts, these are historically forty-year contracts whereby the power station was built at the mouth of the mine and the coal is transferred, uh, transported via conveyor. You can see basically, uh, that between the fixed price and the cost plus, that's where the bulk of the coal used to come from in two thousand, I think, oh, sorry, that is, uh, yeah, that is, I mean, more than ninety percent of the coal came via conveyor. As we are talking, I mean, our conveyor production dropped in F twenty eighty to about seventy, you know, like a seventy million tons and then forty-four million tons, uh, basically came from what we call short medium term and so on. The, the significance of this graph is that we are seeing a tapering down of our cost plus, you know, like a, uh, production and then increase of coal that we transport on road and rail. This short medium term, uh, coal is coal which is supplied from remote mines away from the power station and it comes via road, using road trucks or, you know, like a, uh, through, through transit. So this coal attracts an additional cost, yeah, for, for transportation, which you don't see, you know, like with a conveyor type coal and so on. I think that's the essence of this, uh, particular slide. Okay, and I've mentioned earlier on that we are facing competition as Eskom, which historically never existed. Uh, this is basically the range of coal quality using the, uh, international, you know, like a commercial terms. It's basically five thousand to five thousand six hundred, you know, kilocali coal and four thousand, two thousand, four thousand two hundred to five thousand. This is basically some, what some of our, our station burn, which is also, you know, like exported, and you can see, you know, where, you know, like the amount of coal, this is the total amount of coal that has been exported, uh, from South Africa, the total number. And you can see the, the amount of coal that was exported, which is within the Eskom, you know, like a bandwidth and also within this bandwidth, but it's, it's quite a lot, it's more than forty million tons of coal, uh, or Eskom type coal that is getting exported. And looking at the, uh, going back to the graph that I've shown, that our total production in the country for coal is tapering down, so we're going to be competing with this market, and this market attracts much higher prices than what Eskom, you know, like it can afford through the regulated tariff. Okay, the challenges that we are facing in the company is that we've had some long-term contracts that did not materialize, which were supposed to come in place, it's a long-term supply to Arnold Power Station, it's Cusile, which requires almost a billion tons of coal for the, for forty-year, its entire life. Fortunately, we have started the commercial process, it was an open tender, transparent, we are busy, you know, like contracting coal progressively for Cusile, and then it was Henry now, you know, like, uh, in twenty fifteen, that basically the negotiations to accept the contract were discontinued. We also have, you know, like a lack of capital investment in a five cost plus mines, these are mines that are tied to, to, to the power station via conveyor, and Eskom has an obligation to basically fund the expansion capital. The mining house establishes a, the mine, and they pay for the capital cost, and Eskom contributes there, but the, the further expansion capital and savings and capital is Eskom obligation. Since twenty twelve or so, we have been invested in this mine, hence that it's likely producing, currently they are producing only eight, sixty-eight percent of their required, you know, like a volume. And then there's a bigger problem in a country where some of the contributors was uncertainty policy, the mining charter and the Minerals and Petroleum Resources Development Act. You, uh, we haven't seen a lot of, you know, like investment, this is not only in the coal mining space, but this entire, you know, like a mining industry that has contributed. It is not possible for, for Eskom to can fund, you know, like the total coal requirement from a capital perspective, uh, to come to Eskom. I think in our previous strategy around twenty twelve, we are cited that, uh, on average, you know, like four mines per annum needed to be opened up to supply four big mines, that is mines that can produce more than ten million tons per annum, but that was supposed to be something that is provided by the industry, because never the intention that Eskom would fund, you know, like those particular mines, to open up a mine, you know, like in today's terms, to supply you with ten, ten million tons per annum, you do not spend less than fifteen million, you know, like a third of that mine. And then I've mentioned also our competition. We have, you know, like a, uh, our long-term coal, you know, like a strategy, this is some of the pillars, and one of them is the extension of the cost plus mines to match the life of the power station, that is the five power stations they are lead to, including the investment in those cost plus mines, because it's a no-brainer. You don't, you avoid paying transportation costs to get coal to the particular, you know, like a power station, and transporting coal by conveyor is less than two hundred and fifty tons. And also to extend, you know, like the fixed price contracts, this is the two type of contract, the coal comes by conveyor, in total, the potential of about nine power stations that can be set by these two type of contract. We still need to source coal for stations like Majura that doesn't have, you know, like a tight coal area, and that will be done through open tender for the life of the power station. So we, we, we don't envisage to issue, you know, short-term, you know, like the tenders and where we are consistently in the market sourcing coal. Our objective is to manage the supply of coal. We will go once off, you know, per power station, open tender for the life of the power station to source the coal. We have started the process, we, uh, Cusile has been done as I mentioned, and the others will follow, you know, like it soon. Then coal that cannot be sourced by conveyor, which has to come by road and rail, we have a strategy to get transmit to a, improve the capacity, the domestic rail capacity and domestic, you know, like ports of handling coal from the mines and up to Eskom, that basically is one of the to reduce the amount of coal that we transport by road, it also improves the cost, uh, element, because there's two different cost structures for road and rail. Okay, this is basically showing, uh, what the impact of investing in cost plus mines is. I'll just focus on the right-hand side part, you know, like of the graph, it shows that, you know, for the different financial years, the dark blue part, you know, like it says, if you don't invest in the cost plus mine, this is the maximum amount of coal you're gonna get from those five, you know, like a, uh, mines, and you can see basically declining all the way because you are not accessing, you know, like the remaining reserve. Mining is a geologically expanding, you know, like a process, you need to see new shafts as and when you mine further away from the original shaft. With investment in the cost plus mine, you can see basically, you know, like an additional six million tons in twenty twenty-one, eight, eight, et cetera, so it basically ramps up. And typically the mines will start going back, you know, like to their contractual number. I've mentioned earlier on, they are currently producing a CTA, you know, like a percent, the intention is to ramp them back so that they can produce hundred percent of their contracted coal. Then you avoid really coal by road and rail and adding the transportation cost. Okay, and I think I've summarized basically, you know, like the investment in the cost plus mine, securing long-term, and the transparent process that we're going to use basically to source coal. And I think the increases that we should get, you know, like from the NYPD process should be, you know, marketing should be in today's terms, uh, we enjoy, you know, long-term investments that were done in the sixties and seventies for these tight coal areas, but those investments have basically eroded because you need to now put in new shafts, new infrastructure and equipment in today's terms and so on. That's, check on me.
Good morning. The subject is the independent power producers and the cost associated with it. Firstly, we just need to create an understanding of the policy and regulatory environment in which these programs are done and the rules under which Eskom provides them. It all starts with the Integrated Resource Plan, uh, which is developed by the Department of Energy, and it basically gives you all the information about future expansion of the electricity system, the supply side, and giving you the technology types that you need to do, when to do it and how much of it. The approval of that is done by the, the cabinet after it's gone through a rather rigorous approval process, public participations, N S R and so on, and then you're ready. From there, the Minister of Energy makes determinations, and the determination basically prescribed, uh, um, the technologies that need to be wired, when it needs to be wired, how much, and then also determine who will do this. It either is assigned to private, uh, developers or to Eskom. Even those the private, uh, developers, there's procurement done by the Department of Energy, in which they, um, basically elect the winning bidder, which then becomes the programs and the contracts that Eskom will sign. The, uh, the principles of what's called the section thirty-four procurement is basically that it all starts with the, um, the, the I R P S I've discussed before, but the regulations describes certain rules for us in terms which we, we have to, both to the Department of Energy and to Eskom. Uh, for instance, the value for money criteria, that is, uh, in the regulations, require the Department of Energy and/or Eskom to ensure that these programs meet the full value for money and, uh, it meets all requirements in terms of the different acts that are described forward. Eskom then, uh, when Eskom makes its application, like it's doing now, it has to estimate the future cost of these programs, uh, and, and include it in our application, including the administration cost of it, which is basically the employment, employee benefits cost, people like me that are involved with it, the depreciation travel and subsistence of, of doing these things and the after cost. N S R, which in the process today, will assess this forecasted cost and see, uh, which is part of the revenue application, and, and N S R may make, uh, um, changes to it if they feel that, uh, either overestimation or underestimation has taken place, and this was done before in M Y P D's. Uh, these costs are then included in our revenue application, it just forms part of our costs, and we recover these costs through our tariffs, so people pay through it as which is normal Eskom costs, it's not a separate, uh, uh, cost that is given to customers for this, it's just part of the, of the overall cost that Eskom has. Then, uh, at the end of the year, we go through the R C A process, which college was just discussing with you, and which we show the over or under of this. If we have overestimated the cost, the regulator has the right to draw this back. If we have underestimated the cost, Eskom will receive it and will cover it in the future. It is, you're familiar with this, it was just discussed before. For the purposes of this discussion, it is just that the C I D R for, um, for the I P Ps that are on discussion is thirteen point six percent. The, uh, what the full year mix that we have done for energy, uh, we have given you the history of that, as you can see from twenty sixteen, seventeen financial year to the application of twenty one, twenty-two, and you can see the growing energy, uh, that you find there from this year, estimated about eleven terawatt hours going to, to over eighteen terawatt hours. Uh, this is to do, the, the increases are due to the new programs that were signed in April this year for between the, what is called between the four, and also for, uh, the last part of the three point five. The cost associated with it is, uh, is increasing from, uh, this year about twenty, twenty-six billion, um, if you, if you look at, at over cost, to about thirty, forty-one billion. And this is of course increase in the, the C P I, which almost the drive the, the overall cost, plus the new program that we see, um, getting online. Okay, the programs, um, we have done five programs so far for renewables, uh, between the one to between the four, um, which sounds like four, but there was between the, what was called between the three point five, uh, which was an extension of between the three, but we saw it as a different program. The, um, the cost that we have included for, for between the one to four are based on the, on the contracts that you've signed, so this is not estimations anymore, we know what the prices are. The uncertainty is around the energy, but included in all these contracts are, uh, uh, forward estimation of the energy that will be produced by these I P Ps, and that is used as a basis for the application for, for I P Ps. In terms of the picker, uh, they are online since twenty sixteen, thousand and five megawatts, two stations, um, we pay for capacity and then we do an estimation of the energy and we use the contractually minimum that has to be produced by those stations, in other words, you have to use them at least one percent of the time over the six-month period. That we estimate to be eight to eight gigawatt hours per year, and that form the basis for the energy part of the application for open cycles. Co-generation was announced, but we have not signed the contract, so it's not included in the application. Um, basically coal program has been announced, but it's not, we haven't signed the contract, so it's not included in the application, and we will not do any short-term agreements in the application carriage. Uh, this is a summary of the determinations now rolled out. The different colors shows you the different years when the determinations were made. Uh, this is based on the I R P twenty-ten, so in twenty eleven, all the dark greens determinations were made, in twenty twelve, the lighter greens were made, in twenty fifteen, additional ones. And this is how it was rolled out, the renewable part of it. Um, the first determination was three thousand seven hundred megawatts and so forth. Uh, so far, what was announced was eight thousand, uh, over eight thousand, um, megawatts of this, uh, what was approved, in other words, it went through the governance process and external governance processes, was six thousand three hundred, and what we contracted, in other words, we signed actual contracts, was six thousand two hundred and five megawatts. And so far, what is operational is three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. And so far, what is operational is three thousand eight hundred and seventy six. Those are only for the renewable program, you have to add the thousand and five megawatts if you want to know what the total I P Ps is, which is therefore four thousand eight hundred and eighty one megawatts. The different bit windows, between the one, a thousand four hundred and fifteen operational, between the two, a thousand and thirty three operational, between the three, a thousand four hundred and twenty eight operational. There's nothing yet for between the three point five and between the four, that's just recently been signed, so the first one of those will only come in, in about a year. The, if you look at the prices over time, you can see there is a steady decline in wind and P V, but not so much for C S P, concentrated solar power. The, the portfolio for financial twenty twenty one, twenty two, broken down into the different bit windows, there are different technologies for you, showing to you that the wind are the, on the top, wind is the technology that is the, that will give us the most energy, followed by solar and then C S P and so forth. It also shows that wind has higher load factor than solar, but also there's a much more capacity for wind underlying than for, for the other technologies. All right, the average prices at the end going down, you'll see that the wind is the least expensive, followed by solar, C S P, and then the other ones, which is basically hydro, biomass and landfall. This gives us in, in, in real cost, what the, the cost will be and shows over time, the decline is at the end of the contract period, which is for renewables twenty years, it will fall off. And in terms of the, the earlier increases, the sharp increases as we put the capacities on and then, and of course, it increases phenomenally, we'll see C P I here until it reaches peak and then all of that, the contracts terminate. Let's give you an idea of how they perform on a monthly basis. It is graph view from January sixteen to October eighteen. You can see a seasonal pattern for P V and for C S P also, and a little bit for wind, but it's more falling down in, in the autumn period and then picking up again. So wind is available for us during, highly available for us during the winter period, which is very helpful. Unfortunately, P V and C S P, not so much. They are, they have a seasonal pattern, which is the lowest output is during the winter period, actually, we need in the most. The, the average prices, the real, in April twenty eighteen, you can see the top one, the C S P, this is really based on what actually happened on the system, the, the energy produced and the prices that we paid and in real terms. And then followed by P V at the top, you see it came down and then all stayed flat. Wind also came down a little bit, stayed flat in real terms and that, that probably will be more or less the same. And that brings us to the end of the information that I have to share. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mascherano, what we expected is, as we discussed in the previous hearings, is for the generation, you know, team to also present information and I thought that you said you would get that in depth. And this also deals with the concern we raised with regards to the integrity of the information that was provided to N R S A, because you, you heard from this month's presentation from Mr. Mascherano stating the issue of the shortage of coal stockpile. And what we're told by Mr. Mascherano at N R S A when we wanted to get the basis of the load shedding, we were informed that it is due to the serious challenges that E S C O is faced with the low stockpile that does not meet the requirements of the grid code. So we've got this different information in December, we're told of a different situation and we even said, and I'm saying this on record and I'm saying it in the presence of Mr. Mascherano, and I'm saying if that can be clarified, because later on we then hear from the same entity that the load shedding was caused by challenges with generation. So that's the information that is currently before the energy regulator, in writing, presented to the energy regulator. And part of it is was was presented by Mr. Mascherano even today, but with all previous info, so we do want to get clarity on that.
Jay, you can tell us a question and maybe the system operator can respond to that. What was the real coal yield? Okay, but we can go to other questions.
Members, we received a presentation from E S C O. If you could put some questions of clarity to E S C O so that we can get responses. Mr. Fallin?
Thanks, Jay. Good one question for Dan on the call, so from slide number twelve. I'm not sure if it's in for you, that you gave us in writing, because you would give a confidential way you put the answer now, but I think the question is, if the required investment in the cost plus mines had been made, you said they're currently supplying about sixty eight percent of what the contractual is. If the investment had been made and they were supplying the full contractual volumes now going into this application period, what would that impact have been on the coal cost applied for? Okay, that's the one. And then the other one is for Kali, sorry, get the slide number, this is slide number thirty. But if I say you've given us the, the current pricing up to December twenty eighteen for the, the various technologies, so that you know, and then you on your slide, I don't know what the number is, but on slide number, yeah, twenty five, you've given us the, the prices that you've now signed on for the, the various bit windows. I think what would be quite interesting is to see the slide number thirty projected forward based on the volumes you've contracted as well as the prices that have come down to see what will these prices do. I think you would have a good idea now of the kind of volumes that will be produced because these are obviously the earlier bit windows and the others have not come online at the cheaper, the cheaper contract. So it would be interesting for us, I think, to see what those prices will do going into the future overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fallin. And Mr. Slank?
Thank you, thank you, Chairperson, thank you to E S C O. If maybe I can start with questions related to, to the R F A. Firstly, the, the presentation on, on coal has just highlighted probably the same challenges that we faced with respect to M Y P D three throughout, throughout that period. And that is the structural inefficiencies and, and challenges there. However, what one doesn't see in the, in the application are those adjustments that relates to, to those inefficiencies. There are some concerns that are due to, to the consumer. However, those settings relate to less production, you know, that, that could not meet, meet the target. What we don't see are adjustments that relate to inefficiencies. And perhaps that's, that's something that you need to, to be talking to, to say, how do you then account for, for all these inefficiencies that, that we, that we see? With respect to I P Ps, the one question was, which I didn't see being responded to in the, in the presentation is the whole issue around the use of system charges. Because our understanding is that whereas you are claiming for I P P connection charges, our understanding is that those, those are actually borne by, by the, by the, by the I P Ps and so on. Maybe we can get clarification on that one. Coming to the M Y P D, and, and now talking to, to coal issues, you, you've got your projections with respect to coal costs and that is in slide. I'm not sure what slide number this is, but it shows the cost of coal and generate electricity over the financial year twenty two, twenty two. Now, and, and, and obviously, this, this is a, this is a function of both volumes and, and, and the price of, of coal. And, and volumes are then determined in terms of what you project to be your, your, your sales in totality. And, and related to that will be what you think will be the growth, for instance, in terms of G D P overall in the country. Now, I, I, I have a slight challenge when it comes to your assumptions and, and you base this on, on the, on the economic studies, the two studies that you're undertaking. But if you look at those studies, they actually remind you of estimating growth. For instance, you're talking about G D P growth of about two point three, two point five percent. And we know that in the recent past, we've never even exceeded zero point five percent in terms of coal. So, so now that, that then feeds into what you project to be, to be your, your, your volumes in terms of, in terms of coal going forward. So I, 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 I'm not sure whether you are going to make any, any revisions in terms of your macroeconomic projections, which will then also have an impact in terms of what you think will be the volumes going forward in terms of sales, in terms of coal, but also in terms of what you project to be the required investment in your cost plus mines, which currently you are projecting to be around five billion or so. And, and, and so, and so for me, these, these things are all related to what you think is going to be happening, you know, going forward. So if you get your assumptions wrong or overly optimistic, then this whole application becomes a challenge for us. So I, I, I just want to get a sense of whether are you then going to revise those macroeconomic projections? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Slank. Listen, please, you can ask questions on both applications, R F A as well as M Y P D four. Thank you, Chairperson, and thanks for the presentation from E S C O. Really a lot of information to try to work on over such a short period of time. But I must say that firstly, I would look at the, the R F A. The, the slide, unfortunately, I don't remember from my side. I think it's the fourth slide, which talks to the generation plant performance where talk of the E A R. And then on your comment, you talk of the level assumed by N R S A in the M Y P D three decision. I think it should be clear that those are the, the numbers that we get to being informed by what is, what comes from E S C O. And I think there was this whole issue of who is assumed, who isn't. And I think if maybe they are projecting a new trust set, it will help, because we are also going back now and saying, let's ensure that our forecasts and assumptions are closer to what would be in, in reality. Then the issue yesterday when we were in P E, there was a mention of the tarot principle, which is the eighty twenty principle. As to when one looks at the new build commission dates for the first units, if you look at those dates, sometimes one wonders as to is there any entity that would be able to not be in a crisis if you've got such delays? And this, because if we, we rank the problems, I think we can't run away from the fact that at the heart of our problem is this whole new build that has not realized. And when we look at the performance of these plants as we stand, really, you take that, you put the money that's a bit in, make a watch hour that is, that you are enjoying from them. Because then that translates to other problems, which problems then one would say, should they be borne by the consumer when they are, the E S C O and shareholder, they are deciding? Would of their decision to make, retain decision and then they don't run with. So I, I, we, we, but I know that you are trying to think what are presenting in, in, in Johannesburg concerning this, but it's, it's very important to factor in those issues and say, how do you then take responsibility or accountability for this? Because we, we should not just look at the R A P only, because they then affect others, even the coal, the primary energy, because in some of them you have got the, the coal cheaper, we can gear to coal and all that, which then we should not just focus on R A P as being affected by this new build, but as affecting other elements. Okay, so that is the, the, on the, on this side. On the, on the coal issue, it's a, it's a, it's very troubling because when, what is a big folly of King Coal as a, as a country that is, is well endowed with coal resources and therefore we said we're gonna even look at cleaner coal going forward so you can continue using what we have, because we are really constrained when it comes to all other sources of fossil fuels. But it's, it's disturbing to find that we, we still speak of a shooting. I would just like to know, one of the troubling issues is the inadequate cooperation amongst state-owned entities themselves. How has been your relationship with the Africa E L T mining and finance cooperation, M F C, which is under self, an entity empowered to look at coal and energy resources, which become more like, I would say, state-owned company? How has your relationship been with them in terms of also sourcing for them over and above, looking at the empowerment of the, the coal producers? On your slide, on, on you talk of growing renewable energy sector disrupting E S C O business model and not demand growth. Your request, are your, are your requests for, for tariff increase, increases fueling this disruption? And therefore putting yourselves and the country actually in, in a, in a kind of a tachyto situation where the disruption is running so fast that we're not being able to make requisite transition towards that. In, in that regard, I, I note also on your slide twenty five, where you're talking of the prices that are reducing when it comes to, to I P Ps. I think in that it will, it will help to have that graph superimposed with the, the price from coal as well as the actual price that you pay. Just to superimpose and so you can, it will help to see why, why we stand. And then on, on ceiling, you, you talk about one point two billion tons and you say that there's some coal shortfall. I'd just like you to, to, to further explain that in terms of how the development of the mining site synchronized with the construction, you know, so that they are in sync going forward. And then when it comes to, to I P Ps with your E pickers, you're talking of a And then when it comes to to IPP, with your E pickers, you're talking of a one percent utilization. And I'd just like to know the how optimal is that, just to talk to that in 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 the face also of electricity. I don't share being that way for a specific experience. On slide eleven, you you talk the of the the levels that there are those that that they mentioned those stations that are below the 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 threshold in terms of 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 stock. Maybe because of confidentiality, you may not maybe include those things, but would like to to see the exact figures there in terms of out shortages and so that there's credibility in terms of recover to make that on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, I think the other question that been put by my colleagues.
All right, thank you very much, colleagues. I would like to add some questions and the questions that I'm going to add are really trying to get information. And the approach will be the way we will verify that information from our side. Hence, I would then put these questions because that is the standard we go to apply in assessing what Eskom requires. So if you take it, you can take it in 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 that form. The first one, I will start with the RCA so that we get the, you know, that we can structure the questions in accordance with these applications. On the RCA, what is remaining and what Eskom has not come out clearly on is the is the fixed cost argument. Even when Eskom has not performed according to what was expected, including the energy availability factor. You've performed below that and you've had some challenges with your plants, the performance of the plants and all of that. Now, in terms of NERSA adjusting for such, you know, productive, the lack of positive productive capacity on the part of Eskom. Now, how would you argue in this specific case in twenty seventeen that the issue of the fixed cost? I'm talking about this from a viewpoint of the asset that performed as expected in terms of the standard. The asset that contributed in producing electricity in twenty seventeen, eighteen. So we want to then understand, how do you want NERSA to treat that? The asset that worked, all the, you know, the the various assets that contributed to the provision of electricity in twenty seventeen. Now, on the issue of then the variable costs, where you then say that, well, even if we didn't perform, we didn't produce what we were supposed to produce, what you undertook to produce. But because of all these fixed costs is such a, I don't think, I think you are going to be disruptive and I'm not going to appreciate that. I think all that you can do, you can take that question. And if you need to clarify the response for Eskom, you will be given an opportunity. Eskom is an applicant here and it cannot be right that you start shaking your head and I'm not sure if you actually understood the essence of the question was about two points. So I think you should try and behave yourself. So I just want to understand on the issue of what you then put forward for fixed costs versus variable costs. To say how much of these fixed costs Eskom can put forward as evidence and say, out of the figures that we've audited, and these are the fixed costs that contributed to the amount of electricity that was produced in twenty seventeen. And therefore, NERSA will plead with you that then you can compensate and reimburse or on this basis so that you can cover those fixed costs. So would like to understand what you put forward so that we can see from our side as NERSA, what is it that we can do? That kind of information is not there and you will recall that that is the approach that we've taken previously. But doesn't mean that we can still stick to that approach. But I think it is important because it's kind of a sort of the the point of departure. All right, if you can clarify that. And then the the second thing that I would like to remind you, which we've asked several times. In terms of the sales variance, you have not indicated again the fact that there's a factor on the the demand factors, the price sensitivity, the fact that Eskom increases prices. And because it increases prices, the responsiveness of consumers is quite explicit because they reduce consumption. And therefore, how do you then adjust based on that effect? We would like to see an analysis, an economic analysis through Eskom on price sensitivity, adjusting downwards the cost due to Eskom and charging higher prices and not again penalizing consumers to say, we charge higher prices, consumers reduce consumption, but you are still paying. That's not what we would encourage as an economic regulator. And then the the third aspect on the RCA, and I would like us to take it properly because that's the analysis we're going to do. The third aspect would be the accountability by Eskom based on the supply-side constraints. The fact that you did not maintain plants as you were supposed to. The fact that your maintenance quality was poor. And the fact that your plant did not perform according to the expected standards. So you faced those challenges. Then how do you account for those challenges and make sure that this application that is before us will then have to be revised and adjusted? And the costs must then be quantified so that we can adjust based on that specific factor. Those are the three key things in respect of the the RCA. And I would like Eskom to really take them down because we're not going to repeat them. We expect Eskom in the subsequent hearings to include those in your presentations and do the necessary quantification and the downward adjustments of the costs based on those aspects. And coming to the 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 issue of, or before I actually move forward, you've shown the about two point nine, I think, two point nine reduction in coal costs for the RCA. Can you clarify how that reduction came about? I would want to open the one, I would call it, when NERSA, there's Mr. Dancy here, who assisted board members with regards to these processes. Next time, you can just talk to Mr. Dancy. Okay, good one. I just want to understand the details around that reduction in coal. That's the first aspect of it. The second aspect of it, you must, you will recall that in the previous hearing of the three RCAs, when NERSA took a decision in June twenty eighteen, Eskom has put forward information relating to areas where there was a possible corruption and mismanagement on coal procurement. At that stage, Eskom did not provide quantification of costs in relation to those costs that NERSA should not allow because of corruption. So in this application, would like you to give us an update as well as the quantification of costs that NERSA should now consider to be caused that are attributable to Eskom's actions of a possible corruption as well as mismanagement. So if you could then quantify those and tell us how far you have gone with those? Because we are again now looking into that and make sure that we can disallow when we can or if we need a previous one to assist us with the necessary adjustments in line with the previous decision we have taken. So if you can assist us with those. Moving on to the the NYPD four. The 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 first clarity that I would like to get here is in relation to fixed price versus cost plus. If you can just clarify so that I can understand what you're talking about when you talk fixed price as well as a cost plus. Also, that's the difference there and how different one is relative to the other. And then the the second thing relating to fixed price is about DUVA. So I want to understand for which unit of DUVA will be subjected to fixed price? Given the fact that two units already are not functioning, are not used or usable. Unit three, for instance, is inoperable. You've stated that, again, so it cannot even be considered in our method, or it is completely out, it must be taken out. Because it's not going to contribute. But also, unit four has not been contributing and when it was brought back, again, it suffered multiple failures. So can you tell us which ones are going to be subjected to the fixed cost? And also, what what is sort of the the plan now or your your strategy now going forward in respect of the sort of the long-term contracts in relation to DUVA but also with the other ones? Can we also get comfort now that based on your strategy, coal production strategy and the the picture that was painted this morning, that going forward, we will not suffer or we will not see any challenges pertaining to coal stock profile shortages? What comfort would Eskom provide to NERSA that we will not again hear about coal stock price shortages going forward? The the fourth thing relating to the NYPD four application is is just clarity with regards to, it's it's clarity with regards to the significance of the aspect mentioned by Mr. Maschero with regards to the competition element. What what exactly are you trying to say to us? Because you emphasize this point. Is it, are you implying that or are you some trying to imply that Eskom is likely to pay a higher price because there are other buyers of the same grade of coal? Is that the issue here? Is it the issue of price? Or is it the issue of possible quantities that may not be available of that grade of coal? And so and also, maybe the third thing that you must touch on is the diversity of the suppliers of that coal grade. So that you can see what exactly is the issue that you're trying to point out to the energy regulator here. Because I would assume that if you've got a variety or you've got the diversity of suppliers of that grade of coal that you buy, I wouldn't understand what the issue will be then when it comes to price as well as when it comes to the quantity, if you've got insufficient sellers or suppliers of 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 that. But again, and maybe it's the it's the issue of difference in allocated efficiency. So if you are saying to me, the other buyers are paying a higher price because you talked about that market paying a higher price. Are you now saying that the suppliers of that grade of coal would prefer to rather sell to those buyers that are buying this coal at a higher price than the buyer would take it at a lower price? What exactly is the argument here? I think those are some of the economic considerations one could put forward in this in this point. Can I leave it at that and then we will have a second round of questions? Thank you. Good morning, Pudhi.
Good morning.
Okay, may you please raise your right hand to solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to provide to this panel today is the truth and the whole truth.
I do, yes.
Please state your name and your designation and ask for the record.
My name is Bernard MacCorro. I'm the general manager of the system operation.
Thank you very much. Is there any other person from Eskom who's going to assist in providing responses and clarity? If there is, I would like to, okay, that's fine then. All right, we over to you, Eskom, in terms of the questions you would like to start off with.
Okay, I'm here to respond to the load shedding question. I can confirm that from system operations as required by the grid code, we wrote up four letters to the regulator informing you about the coal shortages. And this is an obligation on us in terms of the coal, sorry, of the grid code to monitor the situation in the power stations. We did highlight that there's a risk of load shedding because of coal shortages. But with regard to the load shedding that we experienced in November and December, none of that was due to coal shortages. Load shedding was caused by poor plant performance. So we had a lot of unplanned outages combined with the vacuum load losses and together with the planned maintenance that was happening at the time. In addition, we also had constraints with regard to picking plant availability. And that is the OCGTs were running out of diesel because of the high utilization at the time. I did explain in the hearings yesterday that the challenge with the summer load is that the profile is flat throughout the day. So if we don't have enough capacity on the conventional generation side, we end up running this picking plant throughout the day. And that unfortunately depletes the diesel and and the palm soil. So just to clarify that the cost of load shedding was purely generation plant performance, not coal-related risks.
Can we then get clarity from Mr. Maschero then? Because Mr. Maschero came, they came to NERSA, we had a meeting in May with regards to the coal shortage. And then there was a follow-up meeting, I think it was in October of twenty eighteen. And there was a presentation done and we asked also a specific question with regards to load shedding. And that happened, I think, in October or so. I can't remember the specific month. And we, at no stage during the provision of that information was it indicated to us that it was due to generation. We were informed that there are challenges with the generation. And then we even said after that meeting with Mr. Maschero, we actually agreed that we will also have a follow-up meeting with the generation team of Eskom. Can you then clarify those 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 issues, but also the sufficiency of coal stock price currently? As we, as at that stage, we even indicated that this would be an issue of non-compliance by Eskom with the grid code.
Thanks, thanks, Jeff. I I can confirm the meetings that you referred to. And in those meetings, as part of the grid code compliance, we had to indicate what the coal stock holding levels were at power stations, which we did, and what the recovery plan was. And around October, that's when we presented, you know, like a revised recovery plan, which is basically the back back top graph I I I presented, you know, like a year. And in that section, it was a question of us to indicate when the different stations are going to recover. Hence, I included the date, you know, in here. There was indeed a subsequent, you know, like a presentation, you know, like to NERSA where we detail that. In in all the discussions here, we highlighted that there is a risk of load shedding because of low stock level when it rains. So it was it was the, it was an issue about, you know, like an insufficient coal. But should we run out of coal, then it will be a problem. However, our plan, the recovery plan, did not, you know, like anticipate any power station running out of coal. It indicated that we're gonna run throughout December at low stock levels. And and during December, that's when the rainy, the the rainy season starts. We also shared what the the rainy preparation plans we have done on the coal supplies. on the coal supply side and what generation basically is doing, you know, like to be able to be taken. But we said, if you have, you know, like a persistent cloud burst, you know, like of more than 50 millimeters, it becomes difficult when you have low stock level to to handle the coal. That's the risk that we highlighted, you know, like and and we believe the risk is still there until we get all the stations to the expected level as indicated on the slide that is shown, you know, like in front of you. That's Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'll respond to the questions on the IPPs. I think the first one that was asked is around the the future of the expectations of future prices. Slides twenty five and twenty six, we tried to cover that. The prices that you see there are the contractual prices, it's fixed. So if it's eighty cents a kilowatt hour, it does not get influenced by, for the renewables, for clarity sake, for renewables, it does not get influenced by the volumes for for most of them. There is an exception, which is CSP. And that exception only applies from between those three onwards where it's a time of use cutoff, which during five hours of the day, which is mostly as the peak hours, you will pay a markup on the price. And so the average price that we are given then for CSP has been worked out as per what the contract estimates the breakdown between the the standard and the peak hours will be. So that average price may change a little bit depending on whether that estimation is correct or not. But the rest of it is fixed. So whether it's one megawatt hour sold to us or ten megawatt hours to electricity will not change. Dominantly, it will change with CPI and only by CPI. The open cycles are different. There's two components to it. The one is the capital component, the capacity component, which are escalated with a certain index. And then the energy, which is mostly derived from the fuel prices, the diesel prices that you have to pay, which is very difficult to estimate. And then also the volume. So the volume plays a large part in estimating the open cycle. What you see and what is given you in the application is the best estimation that we have. But clearly, if the if the index change, which it can, or the the fuel prices go up or down, or the volumes go up and down from our estimation, that will also change. We can, if NERSA desires, create some scenarios around it and send it to you if you would want that. Give you some con of certainty around or uncertainty around these prices.
There's a follow up and if you can, please be straight to the point and you please be your responses.
All right, then in terms of use of system?
There's a follow up question from the member.
Thanks, Chair. I think the slide twenty six gives us the overall. But there's certain dates by which you expect the stuff to come into the system, in my career.
Yes.
We'd like to actually see that blended number over time as they come in. Probably one of this is not really important that you could want to know.
Okay, provided.
So we've got the the overall number right at the end, but we'd like to see how that blends over time.
Can I say, we'll provide it. Then if I can deal with the use of system charges question. In essence, Eskom recovers a portion of its revenue through the use of system charges from network users inclusive of the IPP. So the IPPs are required to pay the use of system charges, the same as everybody else. However, contractually, they can recover that back from Eskom. So they pay it and then they send us a bill and we pay that amount back to them. So that's in essence our view. So yes, they pay for it, but they are, they give the money back for it. If I then can deal with the pickering colonization? The one percent is...
So what what is the rationale then for charging them? Because we also do not even know the discrepancy if they were to pay a portion during the connection of the IPPs into the Eskom system. So why, why charge if the IPPs can still sort of recover or claim it back from Eskom? What's the rationale for it? Why is it that?
Well, it is probably...
What costs are actually being recovered here through these charges?
If I can give you the rationale, it goes back to about 2011 from the Department of Energy. There's the NERSA pricing regulations, which the IPP needs to comply with. But IPP wanted certainty in terms of the of its costs. So let's say we don't know how system, use of system charges will change over time. So we can't build it into our cost. So there was an agreement reached then that, all right, you still have to pay because that is a requirement from NERSA, but we will give it back to you. You don't have to make an assessment of it and move it into your prices. So it's basically a way of saying to NERSA, yes, we are doing actual pricing, giving power system, but we're also keeping the IPP whole by just giving it back to them.
So essentially, this is the charges for no, Eskom does not even know what costs are being incurred by connecting the, also not connected by by IPPs using their system then? You're just doing it simply because maybe there's a policy or NERSA's methodology that requires that? Because you have the evidence that shows that this is the cost that the IPP incurred for using the system. So you're saying that no, that's not the rationale, you cannot actually produce those costs, but it is merely because it's a requirement and therefore the IPPs can claim back? Is that really the essence of your response? Does that want to check?
We know exactly in terms of the pricing policy, what the what they have to pay. And so we make sure that is done and that's the exact amount that they can recover from us. So we know what it is that they should pay for what they've produced and we and they get back the same amount. So we get the actual bill sent to them by the network people so that you can make sure that we compensate them correctly. And this is only for the use of system per man. For the actual connection part of it, the investment part of it, we know exactly what that cost and that is given, the cost of that is covered through our budget quotes that we give them and they have the right to recover that through their prices.
Yeah, Chair, I I think the challenge here is that so these connection charges are now being claimed through the RCA. And so that that means the consumer is going to pay for that. And and is that not the accounting then? Why, why is the consumer going to make to pay for those if the IPPs are claiming no debt?
Yes, it's a good question. I cannot really answer for the rationale for that except for what I said. And Eskom is merely executing a contract that was designed by the Department of Energy and approved by NERSA.
Yeah, just so that you agree then, it doesn't make sense for the consumer to pay now to the WTP? Because the the IPP cost should be as true to that eligibility.
Chair, it could be unfair to Eskom to cover these costs. These are not Eskom's decisions. These were Department of Energy and NERSA decisions that we have to comply with. So we have to recover the cost as part of our revenue.
All right, we're not going to take it further. It is for NERSA to make, you know, its own independent evaluation, evaluation of this and decide what it will do, given the explanation from Eskom and whether it is reasonable and it is just to allow Eskom to recover. So it is not for any answer. We've managed to add this evidence, it is sufficient, we cannot take the issue further. All right, are you done with the responses?
There is one response.
Please go ahead.
That's the one percent utilization of the IPP pickers. The one percent comes from the contract. There's a minimum in the contract that you have to comply with, which is one percent. If you don't dispatch the one percent load factor, Eskom becomes liable for the cost of getting rid of the diesel. It's about killing the diesel in the day. So we would therefore potentially incur additional costs should we not dispatch the station. So we try to keep to the one percent at least, at minimum. But also currently for even, we have done 6.15 percent after this financial year. And for the diesel, we have done 4.88 percent load factor this financial year. Because of the initially, when this was set up, we expected better performance from generators and therefore the requirement from the open cycles were far less. And therefore, the one percent was was the expectation.
All right, Eskom, can you please respond to the other questions? And just try to be efficient with time and get straight to the point.
Chair, I think you summed up all the RCA requirements and what you're expecting. So I think it culminates all the questions around RCA and as I committed to to respond to that detail in accounting. Maybe just the other topic on sales and pricing elasticity. I think next week, we intend to talk about economic studies and sales and we'll include a presentation around pricing elasticity. And then I'll give you what the call questions.
All right, we will appreciate that when you make such a presentation, you provide the latest economic evidence, not the assumptions in reports because it's a it's an evidence based inquiry and analysis. So we don't assume what customers will do. We take exactly the actions of customers. So when we do this kind of analysis and where we want economic evidence, the economic evidence is not an assumption what the customer is likely to do, but it is what the customer has done under the situation. So we just want to make sure that the studies will be relevant and maintain that economic analysis. This is one that has follow up question.
Chair, it doesn't adhere to that request to say, so your economic studies actually look at the macro economic scenarios. But I think we would also appreciate to to look at the sectoral impact as well, if that's possible. Thank you.
Can I, I just want to add to that request, Caleb, when you, I think you're going to come to Rustenburg to present the price elasticity. So there's a concern, if I even look at your slide that you presented in Capstone that says, you know, volumes are down by 0.8 percent, revenue by 2.7. It relates to price elasticity to say, well, if we give you a 10 percent increase, for example, and you get a commensurate, you know, elasticity effect of a 5 percent decline in sales, you're only ever going to recover then 5 percent more revenue, for example. And is there a point at which you've reached where no matter how much we give you, because of the elasticity effect, there's a limit or a dampening effect on the increase in revenue that you could collect? Maybe just cover that in that presentation.
So it is important if your economist is here, the two critical questions, not macroeconomic, but your sort of your microeconomic analysis, two other additional things. One would be your critical sales loss as a result of any increase and the appetite of consumers in in absorbing the increase. Not only consumers, but also when I also business as well and and those that are in specific sectors because you can also test it in terms of sectors. Because other sectors are much more sensitive to any price increase that they cannot absorb. So the level of sensitivity or elasticity will be different. So it will be important then that for the past three years, you do the critical space loss analysis and the revenue part of it, that Mr. Foyt touched on. And if your economist could do that. But secondly, also even going forward and the test, the slip test that you can also apply. Perhaps the slip test, small but significant change in price, the slip test. So I think that's a critical economic tool to check sensitivity or price sensitivity. So if the price were to be increased by 5 percent or in a particular sector to be increased by 10 percent or 15 percent, what is the likelihood of consumers taking less? So that would be what we call the slip test, if you can conduct that. I hope your economist will take those into consideration.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with the, if I may proceed, I'll start with a question from Mr. Fordy. The way he asked that we provide, you know, like a what would be scenario has the cost loss? I think we'll do that as a written submission, that we will do. And then there was another question from Mr. Sibanda on on the planning parameters. That is our band projection, which is a function of the production plan. And when generation, based on the wheel diagram and the outlook of their plant performance when they rerun, you know, like the production plan, we systematically also rerun the production plan. So when that happens, the coal is always making coal planning, we do that. And we sort out also, you know, like the mix and so on. So those would be, you know, like a piggyback, you know, like together. The question raised by Mr. Kizer on South Africa being a coal king and now he hears you talking about coal shortage. It's, I think it's two different, you know, like fundamental issues. So Africa is still blessed with coal in the ground, the coal is there, it's in the ground. I think the shortage we're talking about is the ability to mine the coal and to develop, you know, like resources and to invest in the industry so that we can meet domestic consumption, Eskom consumption, and the export, you know, like a consumption. So what is happening is that the mines that are currently operating and are running, you know, like we are not seeing growth in that as a country. Where it's running on average, 210 people, young times, corruption for the country. It is now declining since 2018, you know, like it is on a further decline whereby I'm saying we're going to be competing, you know, like for for the same coal between other domestic users, exporters and so on. So it is not an element that you know, I have coal in the ground or the coal is there. You know, like it is the extraction that is the problem because of delays in investment as a country, you know, like in the space.
Yeah, I fully understand that, but the issue there is that one will extract that if you've got contracts, then they will have penalties, etc. So it's not necessarily that you are in a spot market altogether that if the prices are increasing, then you are not able to get the coal. So it's a question of, I think it's a matter that it needs its own time to deal with. But it's it's something that is confusing. On the other hand, this issue ever been conducted that are not in your favor. There's a sort of, there's a bit that you are not conducting, issue of contract management. So if there's a problem with that, you need to be the one that carries the can and not the the customer. Mr. Kizer, what would you like Eskom to do?
It's for them to...
Be able to to clarify, to take, in terms of their responsibility or accountability for those shortages. So so that we don't get the consumer paying for what they should have, we'll be able to manage better.
Chair, so one on that maybe I can deal with because the question slightly, the one that you raised on on the issue of our competition, you know, like what what is the essence of the of the message in there? And then your question?
Okay, you may pass it, Mr. Mascherano.
Thank you.
The essence of that is, I think it was implied in your question, it's both factors on the pricing, that the suppliers now have have an option. Whereas previously for this grade coal, you know, like it had a home in Eskom, you know, they would typically dedicate the coal to Eskom. Now they've got a possibility to export, you know, like the coal and and, you know, like a a higher price. If you look at the, you know, like the the export, you know, like a price and something, a grade one... A grade one coal, even at this point in time is more than 1,000, 300 grams, you know, like a per tonne or so. So there, it is an element that they have a home when they give the coal. And then the second part that, you know, like, eh, there is a shortage. It becomes an inherent, you know, like a shortage in coal based on the total production that I've mentioned, you know, like in the country that is declining. And our view with the strategy to say, stimulating the market and telling the market the amount of coal that we require so that we can stimulate the investment in new coal mines, then you don't have this competition. Because our belief in Eskom is that the domestic market and the export market have to coexist, you know, like it is both in the country. The country needs, you know, like, eh, the foreword is there from that and so on. And investing in our own cost plus mine is also risky, you know, like, eh, that particular process. But I think you were spot on in your observation, Chair. Okay, and then there was a request that we should put in post, the coal, I think that, that can be done as a written submission. While our current rent of our, you know, like, eh, one coal is versus what is the latest, you know, like, eh, IPP cost, you know, like, eh, eh, unit cost of, you know, like a supplier as well. I think that, that can be done and submitted, you know, like, eh, to NERSA. Then the, the recovery plan to get this power station to a compliant level, we, we have the information as, eh, shared previously, would give the latest update, where are we in with the different stations? And when are they going to, what is the exact stop date, you know, like the power station, because it's done on a monthly basis. And we've done it up until 2020, we will certainly, you know, like, eh, submit that, you know, like, eh, to NERSA as well. Then the fixed cost, eh, question, eh, the fixed cost versus cost plus. The, the difference in, in, in the two contracts is that the fixed price or, or fixed, yeah, fixed price contract, index fixed price contract is either an alternate, you know, like a type of contract. So the miner goes out, they invest, you know, like their own money, you know, like to, to develop the mine and typically those mines are multi-product mines, you will have a number of, you know, like, eh, products that they mine and they have a number of sub, eh, customers that they will, you know, like, eh, supply. And they will have, you know, like, eh, a rate or tariff based contract with us and the volume that we need to, eh, of take as a minimum. And basically, eh, an index with, you know, cost of, or cost price adjustment, you know, like on a national basis, which has its own basket based on the industry that you're in, that's basically, you know, like, eh, what these fix are. The commonality in the cost plus is that these are mines that, eh, Eskom built the power station at the mouth, you know, like initially and they are ultra-long, 40 years if I mentioned, you know, like initially. And the coal is conveyed, you know, like, eh, via conveyor. So there would be a conveyor from the mine, which is a mine-owned conveyor. There would be point X where we also technically have our conveyor, you know, like, eh, to take the coal to, to the, to Eskom. That's, that's one, you know, like, eh, similarity. The cost plus on the other side is that, eh, the inception of the contract, they are substantially capable, eh, to start up the mine. Uh, it's either 100% bond by the miner and then they end a return on the particular, you know, like, eh, investment, you know, like, eh, for, for the life of what the asset is. The other limitation is that both Eskom and, you know, like, the miner would contribute in the investment to establish, you know, like, eh, the mine. And the miner only gets the return on investment on their, uh, capital contribution. The first part is, eh, like I said, is the return, the return that they end and any other cost that basically has to run the mine Eskom, you know, like, will do that including the expansion and, eh, and, you know, like, eh, equipment replacement capital. That's basically, eh, the, the difference, you know, like, eh, between, between the two, eh, the two contracts there. Then there was an issue about Duva. I think in Duva, there were two things you touched on. One was a fixed price contract, but I think there's a fixed cost in terms of the plant that we're referring to, which I think generation will deal with, eh, probably in a written submission. But from the fixed, you know, like, eh, price component, eh, the contract is for the entire power station and we, you know, like, eh, we, we offtake the entire, you know, like, eh, consignment. If Duva cannot use the coal, we move, you know, like, eh, the coal to other stations that are nearby, we look at an incomplete model. Because the coal is still, you know, like, eh, cheaper to ask compared to other suppliers and even when you put, you know, like, eh, it on rail or some stuff. But the off, the contract doesn't change based on number of units. It's a, it's a volume-based contract. So 10 million tons are now, you know, like, eh, to Duva. And, and when they have units that are off, it's on, you know, we still offtake the coal, then the coal is tested, we move it, you know, like, eh, to other stations. Chair, the, 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 the capital part that was raised, eh, for the next, you know, like, eh, three years, I think they're 5.5 billion that we say for the cost plus, you know, like, eh, what we need to invest. In that graph, we show, I think we're trying to show that if we invest, you know, like, eh, this amount of capital and we show the categories, you know, some of it is for equipment replacement, it's environmental, water management and the others is basically a substantial capital. And it just shows you the ramp up that you will not get the benefit, you know, immediately because, I mean, it's a capital project, they are like civil project. But you can start seeing value with the amount of coal that F that is added and you can see it ramping up, up until, I think, 2024, we've got a bit of 9 million tonnes additional. So it ramps up slowly from about, you know, 2 additional million tonnes to about 9. So that's basically the interrelationship, you know, like, eh, between, you know, like, eh, the capital cost that you put in. The other spinoff which we don't factor in here is that now you don't have to go and pay chase that coal and bring it by road. So there is a cost avoidance, you know, like, eh, element of the transportation and that's the benefit that basically comes, you know, like, eh, to, to, to the, to the consumer. And lastly, Chair, the issue on the, eh, on the RCA. I think we, we will respond to the detail of how, you know, like, eh, the 2 billion, you know, like, eh, that is the DAS RCA. You know, it's a volume basically benefit that we actually, eh, bought and burned less coal than what was in the plan and that's why the benefit, you know, like, eh, comes in the volume. But the details are there and we can provide them.
Alright, can I find out with the, with respect to your plan, eh, eh, the long-term contracts? Eh, are you, when there are some that are coming to an end?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, and then during the period of this NYPD four, are you expecting to conclude any, eh, long-term contracts on coal? Eh, eh, with certain, with significant volumes? I just want to find that out so that we can also, eh, understand the, the importance of the investment or the capital that must be spent during the period of the NYPD four.
Thank you, Chair. Indeed, eh, in, in our plan, eh, part of it is, is to extend the cost plus mines so that the contract measures, you know, like, the life of the station. The life of stations are 50 years, the mines are 40 years. We've already started, you know, like, eh, with Creu and Mafla is also in the procurement process and then the others will follow. And similarly, we drew the same with Gusele, I've mentioned, you know, like, eh, that we've issued, eh, in 2017 already, you know, like, eh, a tender to source coal for the life of Gusele and it can key and all the other options. So coal is being contracted, you know, like, eh, on those particular pieces. The intent is definitely, you know, like, long-term to meet the life of the, eh, of the power station and so on. And that's the, eh, the ethos of the, eh, of the strategy here, as I mentioned earlier.
Chair, we, we now have our responses and there is still being writing and a few clarifications.
Members, is there any specific question, not, eh, comment, but just questions? If there's any question, eh, and direction that you want to put to Eskom? Mr. Smart, anything from your side? Mr. Kizer, any question? Mr. Foley? Okay, no question. Can I then add a few questions from the members, just to make sure that we cover? I take it that we're not repeating those that we've already asked earlier previously, including the assumptions now on the NYPD four? Alright, and the question that I thought, eh, we did not cover even previously eh, is the details, eh, on the failures and the reasons for the failures or defects eh, in the new build. If you could to provide us with the details and the reasons and what actually happened in the new build with regards to those, eh, defects. Eh, and the second thing that, eh, I think I need to clarify and request Eskom to come back to us with a response and also in doing your revised presentation is the accountability on decisions taken by Eskom in respect of the following. I just want to be specific with the, eh, with the, eh, eh, the factors that you will need to, eh, focus on in terms of accountability in these sets, not the one you have, of your study. So the actions pertaining to the fact that Eskom has not, eh, 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 done the replacement of equipment to make sure that you restore the economic, eh, life of the plants. The fact that Eskom has not done that. Secondly, eh, accountability with respect to the required refurbishment eh, that ought to have been done by Eskom even during maintenance of a certain plants. Thirdly, accountability with regards to the deferment of such native refurbishment or, eh, equipment replacement. As well as, eh, the, eh, accountability in relation to maintenance backlog and deferment and, eh, as well as the, eh, fact that Eskom failed to conduct quality maintenance. Eh, this one relates also to, eh, it's not only Duva, but there are some, but it's, it's a Duva, it's a, it's a typical example. Where it was out for too long, money was spent on maintenance and then when it was brought back again, it failed. So, eh, you need to adjust, eh, the cost based on the failure to do proper maintenance and quality maintenance and scoping that maintenance properly. And then the, the other question relating to maintenance is, eh, that would like to find out is what measures has Eskom, eh, put in place to ensure that a maintenance would be carried out efficiently and cost effectively? We need that specific response into this specific question. The fourth thing relating to maintenance with, which is critical and we expect Eskom to submit to us and this really also talks to the question of the, if you look at the operation, eh, the optics and where you said you need additional funds for maintenance. So that we can understand if maintenance was not done properly before and the quality. But now you come back and say, we want additional funds for maintenance. Show us the plan, also plan that is relevant to the period of, eh, you might have a comprehensive, comprehensive plan, but we want maintenance plan for, also for the duration of the, eh, NYPD four. That is quite important because from now on, our methodology requires of us to scrutinize the operational expenses and we will also, eh, look carefully and closely to maintenance cost. So that's why it's important for the next years, show us, eh, your maintenance regime, how you intend to carry it out, why you want additional funds and how you're going to spend this. And given the fact that you seem to have challenges in terms of capability of doing, eh, maintenance properly. So we need that, eh, for our scrutiny before we take a decision. I think that's, that's all for now. Eh, perhaps the other question that you need to add when you come back and revise in your presentation eh, is the, eh, the increase in the operational expenses. I know that you don't need to necessarily, eh, act when, it doesn't mean that you did not account the such, but in terms of, eh, the variance. The intent doesn't mean that you don't account for any cost we allowed you to recover, but it just means that for the variance you don't care, but it doesn't mean that NERSA is head of. So want to understand the overall expenditure that Eskom incurred in 2017, 18 on the operational expenses. What are the basis of that? Thank you. If you can then, eh, provide all those responses and I'm hoping that the NERSA team also is taking notes there for all of those, so that we've got a summary that talks to each other and if certain questions are not responded to, we will be able to make a follow-up. I would like to thank Eskom for the presentation and for unveiling yourselves and, eh, eh, for providing the necessary responses. We're looking forward to the additional information. Thank you very much. Eh, ladies and gentlemen, I think it's, eh, eh, the perfect time now, eh, after all these, these questions and the long discussion with Eskom that we'll take a 15 minutes break for tea and we'll come back here at, eh, half past. Thank you.